The meeting is being recorded.
There's a sign.
Welcome to the September 2021, 2023 meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. It is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford, the Chair of the Board, and I will now start this meeting with the roll call of our Planning Board members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Aray.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Mr. Ger- Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hayford.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo.
Aye.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Board members, please be sure to that you're muting and unmuting your microphones before and after you speak. The Department of Planning published the published the recordings online. If the microphones are not on, the audio is still very spotty. So please be aware if they're on or off. Ms. Bensley, are there any changes to the tentative agenda as published?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. In the September 14, 2023 email, you received draft minutes from the September 7 meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the draft minutes? Are there any changes or corrections? If not, may I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First on the agenda, we have a presentation by Mr. Steve Lafferty, Director of the Department of Planning, and Ms. Sally Nash, the Deputy Director of the Department of Permits, Approvals, and Inspections on Electric Vehicles Charging Stations. This matter comes to the Planning Board as a result of the Council's Resolution 14-23, which asks the Board to review the public electric vehicle charging stations and consider recommendations for possible legislation to integrate this relatively new technology as a permitted use in Baltimore County zoning regulations. After Mr. Lafferty and Ms. Nash have finished their introductions, I will call for a motion to set a public hearing on the matter. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Lafferty and Ms. Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. And before I start, I also want to introduce Seth Bluman from the Office of Sustainability, who is integral to the development of this report. Next slide, please. So as the Chairwoman indicated, this comes to you based on Resolution 1423 that comes from the County Council. This review included benchmarking of various laws, policies, and best practices, not only for Maryland entities and jurisdictions, but also from other places in this country. We also have recommendations regarding safety and sighting standards to be considered. I'll provide some of the background, then turn this over to Ms. Nash to go through the key recommendations. Greenhouse gas emissions coming from the combustion of fossil fuels are really driving so much of the climate change that we are seeing in this country. In fact, transportation tends to be one of the leading causes of greenhouse gas emissions. And the county has demonstrated its commitment to addressing these through a number of executive orders from the County Executive. Since January 2021, just a little over two years ago, EV sales actually have tripled in this country, with the available public charging ports actually growing as well. The total number of EVs has also increased just exponentially, really, in just over a year. And this means that we need to ramp up our how we are going to address the infrastructure demands and needs that exist for electric vehicle charging stations. Next slide. So just to come a few common definitions that we'll be referencing and using throughout the report. First is EVSE, which is Electric Vehicle Supply Equipment. That's a little bit broader than simply the charging stations itself. It has to do with a broader sense of the infrastructure. We also then talk about electric vehicle being capable, ready, or installed with different kind of standards. If it's EV-ready, I'm excuse me, EV-capable, then obviously the capacity and conduit is already in place. EV-ready, then there's full-circuit installation. And then if it's installed, obviously, that means there's a parking space or facility that is fully installed with all the electrical panels to service that particular parking space. Next, please. And I think this is one of the keys to to the whole issue, really, regarding electric vehicle charging. There are three different types, Levels 1 and Levels 2. And as you can see from this, if you can read the slide, Level 1 is what you get at your regular outlet at home, and a lot of people plug in at home. The charging time, though, is only about increasing the range 2 to 5 miles for every 1 hour of your charging. Level 2 is using 220 volts, and that, which you use like for your washer, dryer, and other home hardwired equipment. And this is usually at a public station, and you can get 10 to 20 miles of range increase for every hour of charging. It is the DC Fast Charger that's the largest, often as big as like a gasoline pump, and you'll see these as only usually in the public. And the charging time is very quick. You can get 60 to 80 mile range increase for every 20 minutes of a charge. This is what you often see now with Tesla, where Tesla's installed a lot of DC chargers at various state, various places. We are also asked to look at the health and safety issues. There's some there was some concern whether or not they are dangerous by having these, particularly the Level 3s, the DC Fast Chargers. But scientific research really does not bear this out. There's no legitimate public research that's actually shown to be caused by the electric vehicle supply equipment. And even NHTSA, the National Traffic Safety Administration, said the propensity for severity and severity of the fires and explosions really are compatible comparable to gasoline and diesel vehicular fuels. Next, please. So currently in the county, EVSEs are used both in public and private use. They can be found in public right-of-way if they're approved by PAI through a franchise agreement, and you're not obstructing the right-of-way itself. There's also they also are treated as accessory uses now. If someone applies and wants to install a charging station at, for instance, a new Walmart or someplace, they can get that as an accessory use. And then lastly, they're not considered to be the same as a fuel service station. There was a recent case development on York Road, and this was part of the discussion as whether or not it should be treated as a fuel service station. The county does not do so right now. I'd like now to turn this over to Ms. Nash, who's going to go through some of the key recommendations that we have, and then we'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon. Sally Nash, Permits, Approvals, and Inspections. I'm going to briefly touch on the key recommendations in our report. We'll be going into more detail at the public hearing, so I don't want you to have to listen to me twice. But to start off with, our our main key recommendation is that if we are going to regulate EV charging stations, let's make it clear about where they're where they go and tie that to land use. Next slide. So the key to this is, as Steve mentioned, was differentiating between the different types of chargers, because we believe Level 1 and 2 chargers should be encouraged and should be allowed as accessory uses as they are now, which means allowed pretty much anywhere. The Level 3s, the DC chargers, if we're going to be more restrictive in terms of where they go, I think it would be appropriate to focus on those. No other jurisdiction that we could find currently does differentiate these types of chargers, but I wouldn't be surprised to see similar regulations coming out soon. We'll go into more detail, but we're basically proposing tying it to certain zoning districts. Next slide. We would also like to make the process a little bit easier, both for putting EV charging stations into public spaces for public use, and also for people who want to use county right-of-way. The franchise agreement is a very cumbersome process. It's not really designed for EV charging stations. It's designed more for utilities, but it's it was the best mechanism we had. We think we could probably simplify that and make it easier. Next slide. The next recommendation has to do with site design considerations and considering the whole context of where the EV charging stations are going to go, especially considering things like signage we don't want, you know, to junk up sites with additional advertising or things like that. So we want to make sure we consider the whole site context when we're regulating charging stations. Next slide. The next recommendation is a shift really from restricting where these are to requiring them in certain places and in certain kind of developments. You might be familiar with the new state law that goes into effect October 1. Where all new single-family homes and duplexes and townhomes that have either a garage, a driveway, or a carport are going to be required to have an EV SE or EV-ready infrastructure. So we're making sure that all the home builders are aware of that, because as of October 1, they'll need to make sure that that's included in their in their buildings. Next slide. And we're extending this idea to think about what would we want to see in multifamily developments? Would we want to require a certain percentage of those parking spaces are either EVSE or EV-ready capable, you know, at some level, at some percentage? We're kind of moving into a new era where we're actually going to be requiring these people. Next slide. And we want to make sure we don't forget the importance of considering ADA. When we're planning these things, a lot of times, we get a lot of questions about things just like cords going across sidewalk. Can the cord go across the sidewalk? Well, no. We don't want cords going across sidewalks. We want cords being trenched under the sidewalk is what we require now. I'm going to make that clear, that that is a consideration both for ADA accessibility around the EV charger, and they also have parking spaces that have ADA-accessible EV chargers. So anyone can drive a car that's an EV car, anyone can, you know, find a place to charge their vehicle. Next slide. So I want to thank Planning for their contribution, and OGA, Seth did a great job, as well as Office of Sustainability for helping put together our report and this presentation. And we will be back next month. Thank you.
Mr. Aray.
Are you saying that the requirement would be part of the meeting for residential construction?
It could be in the future, if we want to require it for multifamily. Mm-hmm. That could be your recommendation.
So when you mentioned that it's potentially, well, Tier 1 and Tier 2 are accessory, and then Tier 3, it could be potentially like a zoning into zoning, are you talking about like adding it to certain overlays? Or are you talking about like adding it specifically to BL or BM or whatever?
We were thinking about adding it as a permitted use in certain zoning districts, and that could include overlay districts, but it could also just be added in the underlying zoning district. We weren't thinking of creating a new overlay or anything like that.
Okay, okay. So it would just be incorporated into what is already in.
Mm-hmm. The base level zoning, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McGinnis.
What do you say?
Do we know? I think it is 30. Is it 30? No, it's less than 30%. I don't know what it is at this exact. 3. Steve thinks 3. I I think that might be, is that in our report? I know I've seen that number, but that could be. It's wherever you're getting, most cases, it's wherever you're getting your your electricity from at your house, usually fossil fuels, yes.
And how would they get a charge? Excuse me, say, and how is that, how do they pay for that?
Usually with credit card. There's a program, like an app they download, and then they pay with their credit card.
Charging stations for.
We have a lot of work to do, don't we? Right. You're you're absolutely right. The infrastructure isn't there today. You know, we need to keep building it out, and by requiring EV-ready and EV-capable spaces, you know, that's working to improve and implement more infrastructure. So gradually, it can be expanded to the rural area. Not everyone's going to be able.
It's not impossible to do it in the agricultural areas, I would say.
It it could be. It's just like wireless wireless broadband, you know, it didn't get deployed out to every rural area right away. And I know some places in the eastern shore still don't have reliable internet, so.
Mr. Pirlo.
So 1 and 2, I understand. The 3, you're talking about making it involved with zoning and various levels. What if a person with a residential, single-family home wants to put the Level 3 in there? Is that something they're going to have to comply with, you know, residential zoning and come in and get a permit or have to pay for a permit, pay for the annual fee? Do we have any thoughts on that, whether you are going to expect to collect a fee like yearly?
Those, I mean, that's a good question. We can, we can get back together as a group and think about that before the public hearing. My thought is, you could make it something like a special exception, where you have to go to the ALJ to get approval, but maybe that's too restrictive. Maybe we don't want to be that restrictive. This is your report to make to County Council. You know, you you don't, you can ignore that idea and say everyone should have to have a Level 3 charger at their house, you know, is what I mean.
People are going to want the Level 3 that can afford it. You have to bring that much more power into your house. You'll have to pay BG&E to bring it in at that point. But I do think that people, you know, that would like to have the faster charge, you know, if you're sitting, your car's sitting home for 10, 12 hours, don't get 100 or 200 miles is not going to be enough, really. Really concerned that.
We noodled around the idea of having it where after 5 or something like that, you have to get a special exception, where there's some cutoff, because the concern was, you have Royal Farms, it has 12 Level 3 charging stations. We're in, PAI doesn't treat it like a gas station, but is is the impact in terms of people coming in and out of that site essentially the same as the impact of a gas station? In which case, do we want to regulate that in some way? Maybe we don't. Maybe we do. But that was the impetus for the concern and the question, but we we never found another jurisdiction that had a number of 10. If you're going to have more than 10 of these, then it, then you have to do X, Y, and Z. There's most jurisdictions don't differentiate.
Because it's very new for the whole country.
Right.
But if you take the sidewalk outside, does the county plan to ask, put out an RFP to some company to install, like we have new meters that I guess took electricity to and phone lines to make those work, so we can, you know, put your credit card in and make it all work? I guess I have a concern, you know, who's going to benefit from those fees, if it is fees that you're going to charge, to have five of them here along the road for county vehicles to be charged, you know, at that point? I understand not wanting the cords along the sidewalk and having to bury it, but I'm just concerned that it's, you know, somebody is going to have, like the cell phone towers did, is going to build a very probably successful business over the next 20 years in providing these, you know, in the community. We're going to manage and deal with that as well.
Right. And do our best to anticipate what those impacts are going to be and mitigate that. It's hard since it's changing so fast.
Part of the report that we get, so there is some planning for it now, not asking us to approve something in a few weeks. That hasn't taken that into consideration.
Ms. Wolfson, do you have a question?
Yes, so if if you have them in the public right-of-way, would that generate income for Baltimore County? And I apologize, but would that be under the revenue authority?
If they are publicly available, right now, they are allowed in, they're, they are around in public Baltimore County public facilities, the library, senior centers, et cetera. Those are not currently managed by the revenue authority.
So who manages those?
They're regulated by, or they're managed by BG&E.
And one last question. So if they're in the public right-of-way, is there an intention to distribute them equitably through the out the county?
Is there a plan to distribute them? Yes, I know that the CE is.
I mean, I'm like, I'm thinking about, you know, we came up with this 10 solar facility per district plan, even though District 1 doesn't have enough room to put 10 solar facilities, but, you know, that's, that's what I'm wondering, is there a quantity, their your goal to put throughout the districts or?
I don't have, I wonder if Seth has any comments on the sustainability plan that the county has in terms of installing, moving forward with these.
You have to come up to the microphone, please.
I know they consider equity in future grant-funded opportunities for EV charging stations, so the funding is tied to social measures. We don't have a really scientific analysis of where we're, we're working on a demand model, where the prime stations, where the service need would be. At this point, BG&E has just selected, tried to spread throughout the geographic territory as much as possible. We're going to work on getting a little more scientific with that, and then the equity is tied to financing around grants that we're attaining as well. So that's two ways of addressing that.
Thank you. Mr. Warren, you have a question?
Question slash comment. A number of my clients are starting to think about this, especially in small strip centers, where they have restaurants. There's demand, obviously, to have this charger in, but there's parking requirements. And if we, from what I've heard from some of my clients, that these things can be tied up, like people park their car there to charge and, you know, get a ride to work. Like, so they're like tying the car up, their their site up for a long time, and there's no restriction on how long. It doesn't have to be to do business at their facility to use that, that, that equipment.
And they can regulate that as the shopping center owners. It is actually, you aren't supposed to leave your car parked there if you're done charging. There is.
They're not done charging. That's what I'm saying. It takes a long time to charge a car, so.
Okay. I mean, I, I think the shopping center owner could be like, you can park here for 2 hours max, or something like that, but.
Oh, the other thing that, because of the restriction on parking, is there a thought that, and I would ask that we think about, maybe, you know, changing some of the restrictions on on parking to allow for this issue of people parking for 2 hours, or whatever that timeframe is that people would be parking? So I guess utilizing the public space is one way to to try to mitigate some of that. But if you have to take so many handicapped parking spots, and some of them have to be available for, for electronic charging, the impact, I just don't think that sometimes when we do these.
I mean, we do, as far as zoning concerns, it counts that spot as a parking spot. So you aren't penalized for providing an EV charging, you don't, that you don't have to subtract that from your total parking count. Zoning doesn't necessarily look at utilization of the parking lot, or we'd probably have a lower parking requirement, but zoning does just say, okay, your restaurant has 50 seats, you have to provide this many spaces. So it wouldn't really be taking that into consideration. I mean, I think that the shopping center might be getting complaints, like, I can't park next to your store because these people are hogging the spaces, but that is a policy that the store owner could have to address.
Mr. Hint, Mr. Hinton.
Well, isn't it possible to put a, like a time limit on the actual Level 3, so it'll cut off after 2 hours and that would pretty much solve the issue?
I think you can, yes. I think there's a lot of different options for how you charge people, how the timing of of that kind of thing, and, you know, who has access to the electricity.
Mr. Pirlo.
I guess I'm concerned with BG&E. We all deal with them with public service. They can raise the rates pretty much anytime they want. They seem to get what they want. I'd like to know that the county really has focused on what the costs are. We are always concerned about the price of gas going up and down. All of a sudden, the prices of this, this electric that we need to run our cars has gone beyond what gas would have cost us. I'd like to know that the county, who is the one controlling the installation here, is taking on BG&E and controlling that in some way.
Right. Steve can address.
The agreement the county has now with BG&E really derives from Public Service Commission requirement that BG&E installs these charging stations in public spaces with, working with the various jurisdictions. And the Public Service Commission set the rate that BG&E charges, when if you plug in, for instance, at the Randall Town, Randalls Town Community Center, the Public Service Commission has set that rate. And Madam Chair, we're, I know we have one other presentation today, and certainly we'll be back for the public hearing and get a little more details to you, and also then if you have any further questions, we can pick them up there. But also just want to remind the Board, this is a recommended report to you that you then in turn will recommend or send to the County Council. So if this report does not meet the goals that you see as important, this is up to the Planning Board then to work with the staff and come back then with a report that's really more, if this is not satisfactory, or other things you want to tweak or adjust, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty. So Board members, we are going to have a public hearing, and a lot of these things are going to be delved into a lot more than they are now. So can, is there any other questions that are really pertinent? If not, can we move on with the agenda?
I just have one thing.
Mr. McGinnis.
What, where is, where is the majority of the electricity coming from to run these charging stations?
Well, Maryland is under the PJM grid, so it's really, it's, it's a Pennsylvania, Maryland, New Jersey, there's a, it's a large grid, a large area that provides electrical power that we use in Maryland. And if you're asking about the source.
Yes.
The source is primarily coal. That's where most of the electrical power is generated in this country, at least this part of the country.
Several years ago, I investigated a possibility of putting a windmill up on a farm, and I found out about half a year it would be useless.
We don't have that much wind.
And also found in some parts of the country that same problem they have, and I just wondered how, how in the world they think they're gaining one of those. Anyway.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Okay, if there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion to set a public hearing.
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board sets an in-person public hearing regarding the Electric Vehicles Charging Station Report, Council Resolution 14-23, for Thursday, October 5, 2023, at 5:00 p.m.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we will have a presentation by Mrs. Appazzo of the Department of Public Works and Transportation on the Baltimore County Water Supply and Sewer Plan 2023. Try, try running it to running it to, say that 10 times. That's what I said. After Mrs. Appazzo has finished her introduction, I will call for a motion to set a public hearing on the matter. Please welcome Ms. Appazzo. Triennial.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, Chairman, Chairman of the Board and Board Members. Yes, I I work at the Department of Public Works in the Sewer Design Section, and I'm going to be introducing the Water Supply and Sewage Plan 2023 trian- triannual review of the Planning Board, to the Planning Board. The trian- Next slide, thank you. The triennial review is a comprehensive master plan document that is updated every 3 years as required by the Maryland Environmental Code, Section 9-503. The triennial review of the Water and Sewer Plan must be consistent with approved land use master, master plan and demonstrate adequate water supply and sewage throughout the county. The triennial review examines the current flow data, the current, the current and future water and sewer needs based on population projections to 2050, provided by the Department of Planning, Baltimore County Department of Planning. Per request of the Planning Board, I will present a more detailed information regarding the 2023 triennial review. the 2023 triennial review at the public hearing scheduled for Oct., 5th. Thank you.
Is it at this time? If not, may I entertain a motion to set a public hearing?
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board sets an in-person public hearing regarding the Baltimore County Water Supply and Sewerage Plan 2023 Triannual Review for Thursday, October 5th, 2023, immediately following the conclusion of the EV charging station report public hearing.
May I second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Ms. Bensley will now fill us in on the major actions of the September 14th, 2023 Landmark Preservation Commission.
2023 meeting, the Landmarks Preservation Commission voted to issue 10 certificates of appropriateness to the following properties. Those are Hugheson Property at 309 Morris Avenue in Lutherville, the Watkins Property at 709 Clifton Road in Sudbrook Park, the Caris Property at 504 Sudbrook Lane in Sudbrook Park, the Beverly Property at 16202 Corbett Village Lane in Moncton, the Mitchell Property at 2101 Mount Carmel Road in Parkton, Evergreen Homes EGH Portfolio 2 LLC Property at 915 Adana Road in Sudbrook Park, the Quinn Ocon Property at 110 North Beachwood Avenue in Catonsville, the Carpenter Property at Pleasant Hill Road in Ellicott City, and the 2939 Moncton LLC Property at 2939 Moncton Road in Moncton, and the Reed Davis Property at 20301 Gore Mill Road in Freeland. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Ms. Bensley. Ms. Bensley will now fill us in on legislation recently passed by the county council following our last meeting.
Resolution 2323, amending the boundary of the Baltimore National Pike Commercial Revitalization District, a resolution of the Baltimore County Council for the purpose of amending the boundary of the Baltimore National Pike Commercial, Commercial Revitalization District. The county council has identified an area of land along the northern side of the Baltimore National Pike that is east of Newwood Drive and west of the current westernmost boundary of the Commercial Revitalization District, as shown on the map identified as Exhibit A, and that was included in the PDF. And then Resolution 2423, amending the boundary of the Catonsville Commercial Revitalization District, a resolution of the County, Baltimore County Council for the purpose of amending the boundary of the Catonsville Commercial Revitalization District. The county council has identified a property at 10 St. Timothy's Lane that could benefit from revitalization, as shown on the map identified as Exhibit A, and that concludes the report.
Thank you again, Ms. Bensley. This is the conclusion of our agenda. We will reconvene for a public hearing on the Greater Middle River Design Guidelines at 5:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. See y'all at 5:00. Nine guidelines. The public hearing is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafer, the Chair of the Baltimore County Planning Board, and we will now start with the roll call of our board members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Hayfer?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel's not here, Mr. Hinton? Mr. Halipka?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. McGinnis?
Aye.
Mr. Perlow?
Aye.
Ms. Panero's not here? Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
Thank you all. At the September 7th, 2023 meeting of the planning board, Mr. David Burkenthal of the Department of Planning introduced the Greater Middle River Design Guidelines to the board. Tonight, Mr. Burkenthal is here to further present the guidelines to the board. Following his presentation, board members will have a chance to ask questions and then members of the public will have an opportunity to speak on the matter. Immediately after the public hearing, the board will reconvene for discussions and a vote on the matter. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Burkenthal.
Hello again, Madam Chair. My name is David Burkenthal, and I'm the Eastern Sector Lead Planner with our Community Planning Division. I'm going to go present, I'm going to be presenting an overview of the Greater Middle River Design Guidelines. This present, presentation will be similar to our last meeting, and after I finish up my presentation, I'll turn it over to Cecily Bedwell from Design Collective to provide testimony and answer any of your questions. So let's do a quick overview first. These are new design guidelines, and you can see the boundary of the GMR area here on the right. They will be incorporated into the Comprehensive Manual Development Policies, or CMDP, which is used by the county to help steer commercial and residential development within the goals of the master plan. Council Resolution 223, passed by council on February 21st, 2023, authorized creation of the new guidelines and allowed Essex Middle River Civic Council, EMRC, to lead this new effort. Let me go to the next slide. Thank you, Dan. All right, so I want to go over a timeline and process behind the proposed guidelines. EMRC met with community organizations and similar groups of stakeholders over the last few years. They've been informing folks of what design guidelines are and why they might be a good idea for Middle River. EMRC then worked with Design Collective to prepare the initial drafts of the design guidelines, the same community organizations, and reviewed the initial draft of the guidelines. The draft was then reviewed by planning last December. Then in January, planning met with EMRC and Design Collective to ask broader questions regarding the purpose and intent of the document. Then council passed Resolution 223 on February 21st, authorizing the creation of these design guidelines by EMRC. So, go to the next slide. Okay. Then in April, the Department of Planning received a new draft of the guidelines that had been updated based on the conversations with planning staff in January. Over the summer, Department of Planning staff conducted a more in-depth review of the proposed guidelines and in early August, sent EMRC a detailed letter with requested changes. EMRC returned an updated draft in late August, along with two explanatory letters. This draft and these two letters are what was shared with each of you prior to the September 7th Planning Board meeting, during which today's public hearing was scheduled. The purpose of these design guidelines, as stated near the beginning of the document, is to first serve as a guide for all new development as well as major renovations within the Greater Middle River area. And major renovations are defined as renovations that alter the building facade and/or over 50% of the existing primary structure. And the second purpose is to provide a basis from which the Department of Planning will evaluate development and improvement proposals for compliance. Okay, so actually, now I'd like to hand it over to Cecily to walk us through the proposed guidelines. Or we can go to the next slide, or actually, we can go to that. Perfect, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Board Members. My name is Cecily Bedwell. I am the Director of the Urban Design Studio at Design Collective, a firm downtown in Baltimore. I also served until recently as the Chair of the DRP here for Baltimore County. As David mentioned, we were brought on by the Eastern, sorry, the Essex Middle River Civic Council to work on their behalf to put together design guidelines. This was after some of our work at Greenlee and other sites within Baltimore County and the level of execution they saw there and wanted to see maintained for future developments and other major renovations within their community to maintain a level of character. So this was driven by the community, advocated by the community. Bob Benler and others with the EMRC spent a lot of time in meetings with planning, planning staff, as well as the Civic Council, going through their expectations, reviewing the guideline drafts, giving input, having us revise them, and then putting them together to the drafts that we presented in, I guess it was, uh, Fe, January of this year, and move forward with the process. So I want to go over just a brief outline. I might highlight just a few. I know you've probably all seen this and gone through the guidelines. I just want to highlight a few of the important criteria that may address some of the questions that we've heard and also, you know, to try to answer and advance some of the questions that we've had given to us. So if we could go to just the table of contents, I don't know, are you driving? Sorry. Okay, thank you. Okay. Yeah, that's great. So of course, the first part is just the introduction, the background, the purpose of them. Importantly, I'll focus in on one key criteria for the purpose, but we really go through site design, what we would typically call urban design, but it has to deal with, you know, the overall layout of the site, some broad general recommendations for that. Street design, looking at how new streets can be both well-serving of vehicles, but also not neglecting pedestrians and cyclists, really just good principles, very much like the Complete Streets document, but keeping in that same vein with a little bit more information on how to actually execute those street design standards. Architectural design, that gets into the building facades, you know, the different design measures, massing, but also materials and how those materials may be best used. The landscape guidelines similarly deal with landscape in the same way, materials, as well as how to best use those, and then signage guidelines for any entry monumentation or other signage that may accompany a project. These are foremost geared towards new development projects. However, the community did want to see that if anybody's making major renovations to their home, that they also try to follow these. Importantly, these are guidelines, they're not development standards, they're not regulations. They're what the community would like to see everybody reach, you know, the bar is set, they would like people to reach for that bar, but it in no way is mandatory as development standards or, you know, any type of regulation. They're really the community saying what they would like to see come to their community. Okay, so if we could go to the purpose section, and I don't know if we can zoom in on the first paragraph of that. No, the next, yeah, there, and that first paragraph would be great. So again, these are really geared towards new construction. If somebody is renovating more than 50% of their primary structure, meaning their house versus their garage or some other, you know, accessory building, then these would apply. If they're doing renovations, more than 50% of their facade, they would apply. We are not trying to unduly burden, I think, you know, one of the examples was a senior homeowner who would like to install a ramp on their house, these would not apply. If they, if somebody would like to retrofit their windows, install new windows, or change their shutters, these would not apply. If for some reason, I mean, usually fenestration in a residential structure takes about, about 20% of an elevation. So unless they were, you know, tearing down large vast portions of their facade and inserting, you know, huge expanses of windows, I guess they could get there. But again, that wasn't the intent. The intent is to really look at new development and for any major renovations. The other thing I'd like to point out is, and I think this is a great question, you know, what are the impacts to affordability on, on units that would be developed here? Well, you know, for Greenlee, for example, that was even a higher bar. For example, we require builders to put in a masonry, meaning stone or brick, water tables at the foundation line. We require semanticious siding. There, there's not a, you know, a wish or a guideline, it's a requirement. Those things do drive up costs of the home and, you know, Greenlee has prospered, Neil will speak more of that, but, you know, there is a cost associated with those increase in design. However, I can say that, you know, as an architecture firm, and me personally, I've been involved in affordable housing design. We've designed Hope Six and other affordable housing projects to standards very similar to this. In that case, vinyl siding in one project in Akron, Ohio, but the, the, the care that we took was to use the proper detailing of that vinyl siding. So instead of, you know, having at the bottom, you know, no finish to that, we put a skirt board of a, of a nicer material, we did corner trim. So things that actually people point to and say, that's a beautiful development, you know, how can I get in there? It's like, well, these are affordable housing units, you know? If you meet these standards, you can go in of income. But I, I guess the point is, I've, I've been designing, I've been with Design Collective now 26 years, I've been in the profession 27 years. I've written and had to design by, as well as administer, design guidelines for all different levels of incomes and communities across the country. And I would say that these do not necessarily impact the affordability of the units. So, you know, and we wouldn't want to impose that. You know, I think what we would like to see is new development that's geared towards, you know, middle income and higher incomes, that they reach further, right? Like, the community would like to see the use of semanticious siding. It does help with maintenance over time, it helps with the durability of materials and, you know, I would say the value of the house over the long term. Let's see, I think there were a couple scenarios that I think I addressed, but I'd like to turn it over. I think I've gone through most of those. I will just say that Bob provided, Bob Benler provided lists of the meetings. I know that was another question in a, in a letter to the planning director that highlighted when those meetings occurred, who attended, and, you know, and that what the outcome or the focus of those meetings was and the outcome of those. But with that, I'll turn it over to Neil, and then I'll be happy to answer any other further questions that you might have.
Most days, we come to work and we go home at night and say, that was a tough day. We're all trying to do good, you know? You're here trying to make a better world, Steve's here trying to make a better world, and, you know, often we fail. What we're doing today and what we're here to talk about, and let's just talk about what it is, we're making a better world, we're making a better community. Big words, let, let me back up and do it from the beginning. My name's Neil Greenberg, I'm with Somerset Companies. I'm a developer of large mixed-use communities, not a merchant builder.
Just, just wait, wait, please. Thank you, Ms.
I'm not a merchant builder, I build for multi-generational ownership of my own, my families, and I don't come into a community and make money and leave the community, I stay in the community, I become a good corporate citizen, a good member of the community and contribute to the community. In the Middle River community, right now, I'm, I'm developing a thousand acre community. It's about nine million square feet at completion, we have about six and a half million square feet built today, and we've changed the community for the better. Couple of things, we, we can all have different taste, but I think we can, the majority of us can agree upon what's good architecture and what's good development. Not talking about, do we like a red door or a green door, I'm not talking about taste. Nothing we're talking about today has, is trying to dictate taste and what people like. We're just trying to dictate good quality development to make for a better community, which is good architecture and good construction materials. So the community came to us and said, we really like what you're doing. We, you know, the, the price of the homes were the opposite, and I'm going to say it, were the opposite of affordable housing. Were, um, were, the prices we're getting on our homes, the rents we're getting on our apartments in Middle River, you can't see the water, you can't smell the water, are, you know, stratospheric, you know? Baltimore County has three main growth areas, Middle River's always been, Eastern Baltimore County's always been the ugly stepchild. We all know the stories, and we're leading in Baltimore County with the development we're doing right now. Community came to us and said, why are you doing so well? And why can't the rest of the community do the same? Why can't the rest of the community benefit from what you're doing? And we said they can, and we had a discussion about what we're doing different than everybody else. And like I said earlier, what we're doing different than everybody else is we're remaining in the community, we're not leaving the community. The majority of our industry is what I call a merchant builder. They buy, they build, they sell, they leave. It's not what we're doing, so we care. Let me give you a story, at a project I did in.
Let me just ask a question, please. So on my agenda, Ms. Bedwell and Mr. Keller were to speak. Are you speaking in, in Mr. Keller's absence? Is that what's happening? Okay, so you have just a couple more minutes. Thank you.
I, I did a 12 million square foot project in Anarundel County, and we had a national builder, he's building all the homes in one section, it was a 400 unit section. This project started in 2005. We dictated a set of guidelines like this, and the guidelines we're talking about tonight are what we did at Greenlee, but very light. The guidelines we have that were required to abide by with Baltimore County are significantly more stringent than this. For these guidelines, we started with the Greenlee guidelines, watered them down. For these guidelines, we started with the Greenlee guidelines, watered them down, so we call them Greenlee Light. We did that because of the stakeholders weren't willing to build to the level we agreed to build to. 2005, national builder, 400-unit section of this 12 million square foot project. We demanded what we're talking about tonight, but the full version, not the light version. One of the requirements we had was Hardy, cementitious siding, brand name of Hardy, but any brand. They negotiated back on us and said, it's too expensive, we can't afford it. So we required it fronting all the main roads, but not internal. So when you drive through the community, you're seeing the higher building materials. So interior to the community, the first five homes they built, they built with vinyl siding. But all the homes along the main road were built with Hardy siding, or cementitious siding. Of the 400 units, only those five homes had vinyl siding. Because all the homeowners wanted to pay the upgrade cost for it. To the extent this national builder, which is Toll Brothers, a, as a result of that project, made Hardy standard nationwide. So those are the type things we're talking about. So the people who would be against doing this are the merchant builders. The home builders don't want to do this because of cost. Our full package is about $20,000 more per home. This light package is probably $5,000 to $10,000 more. Builders don't want to do it. It's $5,000 to $10,000 more, and I think we all know in a, in a market, there's a ceiling on what you can charge for a home or for a product. But what does it do? A, a merchant builder to save $20 will end, end up costing that homeowner thousands and thousands of dollars of maintenance and repairs 10 years later, 15 years later. So the homeowner, given the choice, when they see the product next to each other, chooses the nicer product, which is why we're doing so well in Greenlee, because we have no competition.
Okay, I'm going to ask the board if they have any questions.
Yes ma'am.
Board members? Mr. Warren?
Here, Greenlee Project, what's the average price per house?
The single-family homes, which are very small lots, in the mid eights. We have homes selling that have sold for over a million dollars. The townhomes in the mid sixes, we've been to about $800,000. I mean, big numbers.
Affordable housing in Baltimore County, so the average household income in Baltimore County is around $90,000 right now. So you can afford around three and a half to four times your household income. They can't afford the houses that you're building. So we can't have that be 20% of a community. That, that's, it's un, it's unattainable for the majority of our community. So to do this, you say 10,000, 5,000, you know? We're already at and beyond the capacity of the average homeowner to be able to buy a house in our community. So I appreciate, I do pretty well, I know you do pretty well. We can afford that, the average person, the average person. I'm not talking about affordable, I'm saying the average household income in our county can't afford that. So I would just appreciate you taking that into consideration.
Well, I don't need to take it under consideration, it's absolutely true what you're saying. Greenlee is not for everybody, we do not have housing for all demographic ranges. Middle River does. What Middle River wants to know is, when they're building, you know, the gamut of housing types, that it's done with good architecture and good quality building materials, not taste. So yes, you know, the, at, at the bottom of the price scale, it would just be a little nicer. It would be a little better architecture. It would cause the person, I, I think we all know, people don't, most people don't properly maintain their homes because it's expensive. So if we give somebody a maintenance-free exterior and it costs them another $5,000 or $10,000, which they can put into their mortgage, maybe if they can afford it, they're going to save multiple times that in maintenance down the road. And then this is, yes, affordable housing is a major problem everywhere today. It's a, the only solution to affordable housing is political in nature. This is a community who just want, that wants to raise the bar and make a better community. But yes, it, no one sitting here today can address affordable housing.
Mr. Hulupka.
Sorry. I guess a couple of questions. A lot of what you're talking about feels, sounds like it's geared towards new development. And so my question is, how much, within the area that's being considered, how much of it is like, is potentially developable? Versus how much, then I guess this was some of the concerns we had at the last one, how much of this is being, that almost felt like sort of a retroactive HOA? You know, existing homeowners will now have to, will they have to follow, or what will the guidelines be? How any of this be enforced? Like I said, it's one thing if you're a development and you say, here's what we're going to do. That's fine, then the people who are buying into your project are going to buy into it. It sounds like you're trying to apply this to other potential developers? Okay, I can sort of see that, and then I guess the concern is for the people who've already bought a house or already have land, why should they be beholden to the guidelines that you've set forth?
Well, first of all, I just want to be clear, I'm here at the request of the community. Everything I'm doing is at the request of the community, I'm not the leader here, I'm just being a good foot soldier and a good member of the community. I'm not, I, I care about what I do, and I'm here on, as a good member of the community. But to answer your question, no, it's, it's not meant to really apply to existing homes. Just if someone knocks their home down, we would hope they would build it to the new standard. Not, not something most people would do.
I think Ms. Bedwell has.
Goes back to, I mean, it goes back to what I was saying. I mean, there is a, a clause in the guidelines that's specifically geared towards that, so it wouldn't impact someone who is doing, other than a major renovation on their home, it wouldn't impact them. We would hope that they would still, you know, want to do, you know, good by the community, what the community has unanimously, you know, asked for and approved. But it's not a requirement, nor is, again, these are only guidelines, there's no mandatory nature to any of this. So I understand the concerns, but, you know, if, if there is an affordable housing project that wants to be built and says, there's no way we can do cementitious, it even says, you know, vinyl siding is not encouraged, but if you do it, please detail it correctly, that's all it says. So I think some of the ideas of the affordability are a little misconstrued in terms of these being guidelines and, you know, the allowances for materials. I will say that I combed through the guidelines again recently. And the only other thing I, I saw in there that would cause, you know, again, talked about the cementitious versus vinyl siding. There's, you can do foundation, that's just a stamped foundation, concrete foundation, you don't have to do masonry. The only thing that I saw and would be happy to, to change it would be the architectural asphalt shingles. We could change that to be just dimensional shingles. Really, that's the only large cost implication. Go ahead.
Mr. Hulupka. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have two quick questions. I'm a little confused, and maybe I'm the only one who's a little confused on the area that the guidelines are supposed to apply to. I think if you go to the next page. Is this different than what's in the, in the actual?
No, this is from the guidelines.
Because it looked like there was a smaller area in, within this portion that it specifically applied to, and then made reference that it would, could possibly apply beyond.
The only thing I think, Mark, is that the prior page where we talked about background, we referred to another study, and we have a graphic from that study, but that in no way.
Maybe, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm, maybe the only one who's confused.
So this is the area that it would apply to.
This area really comprises the Essex Middle River Civic Association, my number could be slightly, I think represents 24 community groups. The presidents of the 24 community groups are on the board. And I, this area, I'm pretty sure encompasses the area of those 24 groups. Are there other groups in the area? I, I don't know the answer to that, I, I, I don't know why anyone wouldn't be part of the civic council. But this was presented and voted on unanimously by the civic council.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, you say very clearly tonight that it's a guideline. I'm not sure it reads so clearly in the document, because I didn't read it that way when I first read it. It, and you gave the example of Toll Brothers maybe wanting to come in and holding them, you know, to a higher standard than maybe they would typically want to do. But if a Toll Brothers wants to come in and do what they want to do, there's nothing in the guidelines that say you have to do it for the guidelines, correct?
I, I, I agree with you, so Cecily and I are not talking on the same page. That's going to be up to the politicians. To me, if it's not mandatory, it's useless.
Well, I, I think that's what leads to all the attorneys getting involved, because it's not clear. And whether it's a requirement or not. And then we say that it's going to be used by Baltimore County Planning when a developer comes in, and they're going to look at the guidelines and compare what's being proposed to the guidelines. You know, that's, that's just natural, because it's part of, you know, the documents. But if somebody says, I don't want to comply with the guidelines, you know, I'm, I'm building what I think is the appropriate for the demographic I'm building to, there's nothing that we can say that would keep them from doing that, if it's truly a guideline. And I'm not sure it really reads as a guideline.
I don't think a single merchant builder would voluntarily agree to be bound by the guidelines. So again, not, not me, I want to be clear. How, you know, what is that conversation going to be between the community and the council? Because at the end of the day, this is a council decision. So Cecily intends it to be a guideline. I, I think the community, the 24 community groups don't. But that, that's, that's a political question, I can't answer that, that's up to the county council.
One last, one last comment, madam.
One more, and I've got it going around. Go ahead.
I just want to point out that the CDA tax credits for low-income, income housing requires the higher level of materials that Cecily was just talking about.
Because they don't want the maintenance and the repair costs to the homeowner who can't afford it.
It's long, it's a long term.
Long term. I will remind you, they also required us to use lead paint for a long period of time, but it's another issue.
Right, Mr. Hafner, you have a question?
Now, just a clarification, so according to the report, this is a map of the Greater Middle River area. The Greater Middle River Design Guidelines area is actually much smaller than that. It's smaller than that, still large, but smaller, this is the whole Middle River area. These guidelines are, according to page, page three, or page two, second column, it's a area bounded by Martin Boulevard, Pulaski Highway, Ebenezer Road, and then, I guess, up along the railroad tracks. So it's a, if we, if, I don't know if you have access to it, but page, page two, there it is, yeah, that's it, thank you.
I know the community is not intending to impose this upon people who are not part of the group that endorsed it. Cecily, I don't know if you, I can't answer that.
Yeah, I, so, sorry, I'm, the graphic at the bottom of the page was a document that was previous. If we go to the next, I don't know, what was the next page? So I just want to make.
All the areas as well. But the one you just showed was much bigger than this.
Right.
This is still a very large area.
It is, yeah, I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So that's just, so, sorry to be confusing, but that's just an area referring to the past plan. So if you look at the past plan on the previous page, is the same area that's at that central graphic. That is referring to a previous document, we were just indicating, we can change that if that's confusing or causing confusion, I don't want it to, but we were just showing that is the area that's represented from that past planning project, we're still in the background area. The other map that shows the broader area is what the guidelines are to be geared towards. So not this, the next page, right? So this is the area, under purpose section. So, you know, that was the intent, so just to clarify that. Now, if any, you know, if people are looking at a smaller area, we welcome that under advisement, you can approve it with that condition, just know that this is what the count, the community group would like to see.
Mr. Ray.
Now, you have stated many times that it's a guideline, going back to what Mark just indicated. Who can override the guideline? For example, if I am, if I own a home and I wanted to make some.
Mr. Ray, please turn on your microphone, thank you.
Okay, let me start. You have said many times, the guideline is not binding. Who can, who in the county can override the guideline?
So.
If I want to do renovation, and I don't want to abide by the guideline, where can I petition to, is it to you, is it to the planning board?
It, it would be to the, the planning department, that's what it was changed from, not the DRP, but the planning department.
Because, you know, we have, is it Neil? Neil, you have said that you've indicated so many things, it's not binding. You want first-class material to be used in construction, right? So I'm very confused right now. We want to approve it, I'm confused. Why don't you give me, what is an example of major renovation that can fall within the guideline?
Okay, that's a great question. So a major renovation would be if you were, you had a single-story house and you wanted to add an addition that was more than half the current footprint of your house. It could be, you know, there have been cases where somebody wants to raise the roof and add a second story to their home, that would certainly apply. You know, a major addition for an in-law suite that was, you know, bedroom, kitchen, et cetera, it would have to be fairly large, more than 50% of the existing primary structure footprint. So a major renovation, not just upgrading, you know, a porch, that wouldn't comply, that wouldn't be required, adding a handicap ramp to the front would not be required. So that would be the type of renovation that would be required.
All right, Mr. Ray. And now you know, planning board members, you have other questions, but this is really a public hearing to, to let the public speak, and then we're going to reconvene afterwards. And we can have questions or comments. So I'm just asking for the people that have signed up to speak, if you have a few more questions you want to ask, will you be here afterwards when we, when we reconvene? So if any of the board members have any questions, they can ask you.
Yes, absolutely.
That'd be okay? Mr. Lafferty, is that all right with you? Thank you. So board members, do you have any questions right now? If not, then is there anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two speakers signed up, the first one is Isaac Ambruso.
Welcome, Mr. Ambruso.
Wonderful. Good evening, Chair Hefford, Vice Chair Hulupka, members of the planning board. My name is Isaac Ambruso, and I'm here representing the Maryland Building Industry Association to comment on the design guidelines. We have reviewed this document and concluded that the guidelines as outlined in the plan are unrealistic and impose significant costs to both new homes and existing homeowners. These guidelines are not in keeping with the architecture that currently predominates the Middle River community and would force existing residents to potentially make costly upgrades during any renovations, potentially forcing the replacement of windows, doors, siding, and even roofs, even if they were not part of the intended renovation work. Many of these guidelines serve no architectural purpose and instead are based on the aesthetic preferences of a small number of community members involved in the copying of these guidelines modeled on the Greenlee Master Plan community standards. This plan, this, these guidelines create a de facto HOA without the benefit of broad community representation, and I respectfully, respectfully request that they not be approved. Should there be a desire for guidelines by the Greater Middle River community, they should be thoroughly vetted by a more substantial team of experts and builders to determine the financial impact and ensure they are developed in, more in keeping with the community aesthetic. Based on the conversation that we had earlier, I pulled up a couple of numbers that I would like to leave the board with. According to the National Associate of Home, National Association of Home Builders 2022 estimates, a $1,000 increase in the median price of a home nationwide prices out 117,932 people. The estimate of the income level needed to afford the median house in the state of Maryland is over $1 million. For a new home buyer, the estimated income requirement is $90,000. This is not in keeping with the median income in Baltimore County. So $10,000 prices out a lot of people. So $10,000 prices out a lot of people. And I think that that should be considered when considering the implementation of these guidelines. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Steve Smith.
Sir, would you mind stepping back up? One of our board members has a question for you. I apologize. Sorry, Mr. Smith. I promise we'll get you up here in a moment.
Of course.
Sir, according to what was told to us already, the community was on board with this. So the information that you're presenting to us now or talking to us about now, did you relay that to the community?
We were not involved in the creation of these planning guidelines. Nobody reached out to MBIA or any of its members when these guidelines were being crafted.
Right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you coming back. Thank you for your patience.
I usually ad lib when I get up here, but I'm going to read because I can only say. Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Steve Smith, and I'm with Caleb Brooks Realty Company, a local real estate development brokerage firm. I've been doing development work in the county for the past 40 years. I'm also a life board member of MBIA and serve on the Baltimore County Chapter Board. I have serious concerns about the Greater Middle River Design Guidelines that are being proposed by the Essex Middle River Civic Council. I have a project that could be impacted by these guidelines. My first concern is the design guidelines will discourage creativity and innovation in future developments in the area. Guidelines closely copy the Greenlee Crossroads Pattern Book. While Greenlee is an impressive development, the principles applied there do not translate to smaller development parcels. There are few, if any, undeveloped parcels in the Middle River area where these principles could be successfully applied. Also, my many years as a developer, I have seen styles change and adapt every time. The guidelines ignore this fact. They state that new residential construction should reflect mid-Atlantic Maryland vernacular architecture. I don't even know what that means. These guidelines constrain design, including dictating what materials are allowed to be used on the homes, the color of shutters, window screens, and railings, and even mandating what color mulch homeowners are allowed to use. Although just guidelines at this point, they are intended to be enforced, otherwise they have no meaning. This level of control is unnecessary. Several layers of regulation already exist to ensure quality developments, including a requirement to comply with Section 260 of the zoning regs and the Comprehensive Manual Development Policies. The Department of Planning does a tremendous job of ensuring compliance with these standards. There is simply no need for another layer of regulatory review. The design guidelines would also place an undue burden on existing homes. There clearly have been little consideration of how these guidelines would impact new construction and renovation costs in a county that continues to price prospective buyers out of the market. Many houses in the area are aging, and the cost implications could stop current residents from improving their property. For the reasons stated above, I ask that you vote not to adopt the Middle River Design Guidelines. Thank you for your comments.
All right. Does that conclude our speakers? Thank you. Thank you for everyone that came and spoke on this matter. The planning board will take into consideration all the comments that were made this evening. Now, if there are no other questions from our planning board, we will conclude the public hearing, and then we will immediately reconvene for discussion on the matter, and then have a vote. May I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, then we'll start again. Good evening again. The public meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board is now reconvened and called to order. Nancy Hefford is chair of the Baltimore County Planning Board, and we will start with another roll call. Mr. Ray. Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hayfer.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinle is not here. Mr. Hinton.
Aye.
Mr. Halupka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Perlow. Nero is not here. Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warren. The board now has an opportunity to discuss and then vote on the Greater Middle River Design Guidelines. Mr. Burkenthal is here to answer any questions of the board that may have to discuss before going to the vote. And all the other speakers are here also if there's any other questions. So are there any questions or comments right now? Okay, we'll start with Mr. Warren.
The problem I have with guidelines is, we have had, I've been on this board for, I guess, 11 years now. What happens with these plans? We approve something, the community sues the developer, it goes to a judge, judge throws it back to us, it increases the overall cost of development dramatically. And these guidelines, we say they're guidelines, but they're used as weapons to prevent development. And that's by me, it's more of a comment than it is a question. But I've seen it over 11 years, and so it's not simply a guideline. It's going to be used as a tool.
I'm going to go around the room. Any question? Mr. Perlow.
Lady, I'm sorry. The guidelines also cover even commercial redevelopment and all as well? That's just a question before I make my comments.
Not all commercial development. It's limited to multifamily, which falls under commercial development, and some other.
Not shopping centers or anything else.
No, I don't think those are included in this.
The way I read it, I felt like it is doing that, and that's a concern. I just needed that clarification from you. You know, I have some major problems with this. I do feel that it is overkill. Neil, no deference to you, Greenlee is unbelievable. So is Maple Lawn, so is Arundel Mills. I know what you've done, and it has brought the level of our development in the state of Maryland to a higher level. And I'm okay with that, if you can afford it. There is so much our county has become, you can sit back down, I'm sorry, that was the only question I had to ask you. But I do have some major problems with this overlay. I think that we're going to find that Middle River is going to do it, and I'm not 100% sure that everybody that you referenced, the 24 people, are all in favor. We've been made aware that there's a couple that aren't in favor of it now or didn't know about it. We all, I think here, as we've discussed internally and ourselves, are concerned that the entire community, including home builders, whether it's renovation companies or home improvement companies and all, have all been brought into this discussion. I am concerned about affordable housing. Our county has become a minority county over the last 10 years or so. If you look at the numbers that are projected out in census and other things at that point, you know, when you have great projects, you can go up to Harford County and see Bully Rock, and, you know, it's a wonderful project that continues, you know, to sell its units and sell them at a very decent price as well. But I am really very concerned that if we do this for Middle River, then Pikeville will want it, and there's a major amount of homes being re, totally torn down and/or adding the second floors and all that you talk about. And it's more than 50% without question. A lot of it is the religious Jewish community in that development, in that neighborhood. And they'll want some type of overlay as well. And you look at, you know, wherever you want to pick in the county. It could be, you know, out in Rice's Town, it can be in Owings Mills, which I think that a lot of the projects that have been built are very, very nice. Every one of the builders that, you know, that build here in the county have to go through the planning department. They have their pattern, their plan books, they have to have them approved. The planning department has that ability to comment, make correction, not corrections, but suggestions on what they would like to see. I would tell you that I think in the 45 years I've been in the real estate industry, our product in Baltimore County has definitely improved very, very substantially, up to the Greenlee being the top of the market here in Baltimore County now. I am concerned that, you know, if it does apply to the commercial world, you know, you've got Martin State Airport, I think, is maybe in it. Do they tell them that when they need to redo the hangars, that they have to do it prettier, you know, at that point? You know, but you say that, you shake your head, no, but we don't know that, okay? It's a concern that this becomes the edict and maybe gets enforced by the planning department when it's not what maybe the people really want in the county. Your community associations, you know, there's leadership there, they represent it. But they have their homeowners associations, and they have their condominium associations. If you're giving them another bite of the apple, are they going to demand that some of this renovations 20 or 40 years from now? Our county is a very old county. It's 125 years old. There's no question that there's going to be a lot of redevelopment of housing at that point. And I'm just not sure, and I understand that there's areas of the county that don't have homeowners association built back in the 60s and 70s at that point. I happen to live in a development, and I renovated a 1922 house, 22, built in 1922. And I know it took my wife three years to make everybody happy for what they wanted in that development, which has a very strict covenant on it. I'm not sure that the covenant shouldn't be left to the actual community neighborhoods rather than to this large group, because I am concerned that it is going to be spread over the county at that point. The landscape, you know, to tell somebody that you like them to plant yellow flowers instead of blue flowers, I don't really think that that's, you know, the neighborhood association's decision to make. You know, coming to signage, you talked about signage, so that's where I got the commercial feel on this at all. I understand it's entrance signage, it says, but it's entrance signage to, you know, a shopping center or something at that point. We did have this discussion maybe in the last year about Liberty Road, and they wanted us to build big brick walls, okay, all up and down Liberty Road to block the shopping centers so you had to come in. And that's not what I think the community wants. I think people want to know that there is an oddity in that development or something at that point. So these are the concerns that we deal with here on the planning board. We don't make the final decision. We know that. We understand we're here to discuss it and try to give our suggestions to the council. But this is truly something that, I understand, a huge amount of time went into this, okay? Getting Design Collective, I have great respect for your work, you know, especially in the city. I see you all the time. I know what you do. I know your, you know, your partners and all. I understand the neighborhood leadership would like to see this. But I'm not sure that everybody that's there is going to be able to afford to renovate their houses in 20 years the way that these design standards are going to require. It's my feeling.
Thank you, folks. Mr. Heckman.
I, just a couple of comments. I already expressed my concern. You kept calling them requirements, and as I understand them, they're not requirements. Two, I totally disagree with the suggestion that nice design and nice neighborhoods are the purview of wealthy people. And what some of the comments are making it sound like, you know, we don't want these guidelines that people have expressed that they like because, you know, only rich people can afford to build a house there. Or, you know, a lot of the, 90% of the guidelines are not about the materials of the houses and not about, you know, the color of the, you know, daffodils you plant. It's about good traditional neighborhood design planning. And that could be for rich people, and it could be for, you know, people who are not so wealthy. And so I just want to make that comment, because a lot of the comments are suggesting that, you know, that's going to make the entire county now unaffordable. And I don't, there's actually more density in what's being proposed than it is in a lot of the zoning that we currently have. So I think you can make a case that this would actually be more affordable. Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Halupka? Could you send the mic over, please?
But then along those sort of, that sort of same vein, then is there a reason we shouldn't apply these guidelines to the entire county? Or is, would there be some problem with applying these guidelines to the entire county? Because I think the concern with some of us is that, in some way, shape, or form, it'll become the guideline. You know, as I said, other communities will want it. Either they'll do this, or they'll change it. Would the county be better off if the entire county had to follow these guidelines?
Got a question or comment?
That's a question to the developers. It's a question to the planning staff.
Ms. Bedwell.
So thank you for the debate and conversation. You know, I won't answer, you know, the question that you put on the table, would the county be better off with it? I know this community would like it. I don't see it as a burden. I see it as a community saying, this is what we would like to see. They want to have an expectation that their community is well-received and is well-cared for. I don't see that as a negative. I don't see it as unduly burdening low-income people. I personally would never, as a design professional, implement or be part of implementing anything that would, just to state that very clearly. We've designed, I know Mr. Heckman and his firm have as well, affordable housing that has to apply higher standards than some of the mid-level income homes that people buy, you know. Would the county be better off with good design? We don't, we are not imparting any style. I've never written any guidelines that require a certain style. So while I have the mic, I just wanted to say that. We are not trying to impact the affordability of homes within Baltimore County. Would it be great if, you know, if people had expectations of good construction, good material use, good design? I think so, but that's for the communities to decide.
So what would not meet the guidelines?
Sorry, what would?
What kind of development would not meet the guidelines?
That, I mean, I don't want to pick on any particular development that's happening, but.
But I would like some sense of, you know, you guys have said lots of, here are all the good things.
Merchant builders who are doing, yeah, so, you know.
Or just a specific type, and what would not make the?
Sure. So I think what comes to my mind just on, you know, answering that question off the cuff is a small house that is garage-prominent, meaning the garage is pulled forward of the house, has vinyl siding, is using trim in bizarre ways, and applying shutters haphazardly, and has no, just to answer the question. All that Maryland vernacular architecture means is architecture that responds to the environment in Maryland, meaning it has pitched roofs that are appropriate for our climate, that has overhangs that are appropriate for our climate, that has, you know, hearkens back to how we used to build things because we used to build things that responded to climate. That's all that means. So I'm sorry someone doesn't know the meaning of that, but it's really critical that we all kind of think about where we are on this planet and where, you know, how we respond to the climate that's here in Maryland. That's all that means. So, you know, that is what the guidelines are trying to point to.
Thank you, Ms. Bedwell.
I just, I think you asked a really important question. And we're here because one community, through representative government, so are there homeowners in communities that may not support this, I'm sure, but your representative government, the 24 homeowners or groups, did unanimously consent to this, and they're requesting this for their community. If it's successful, and if it's good, whatever that means, yes, it will spread. And if it spreads, it means it's making something better. If it, you know, for lack of a better word, quote-unquote, is bad, not good, it won't spread. So that's why I don't think anybody's asking you to apply it to stakeholders who haven't requested it. But I think if it is successful, it's exactly what's going to happen. And if it's not, it'll go away.
Mr. Ray? Oh, go ahead.
First, I'd like to thank the speakers for coming out and providing their presentation. It's interesting to me, you've used the word "community support" many, many times during the presentation, yet you all are basically hired guns, who, and the community associations seem to have left it to you. So I think that's just interesting to point out. Also, for the record, community associations are not part of the elected government in Baltimore County. Community associations are community associations. They are not a level of government. So it should not be stated that community associations are representative level of government, because that's just not the case. In Council Resolution 2-23, the council charged the planning board with a critically important function as it relates to these guidelines, subjecting the guidelines to board review and, to quote, "to such further modifications as deemed advisable and eventual adoption by the planning board." So where do things currently stand? We've been provided with what is represented as simply designed. We've been provided with what is represented as simply design guidelines that will lead to better quality housing stock in an extremely large geographic area. These design guidelines, however, do not appear to be about quality, instead they focus on appearance, aesthetics, uniformity, and conformity. Interestingly, we've been told that they are not standards, yet the word "standard" appears 36 times in the document. This board has asked questions about cost, equity, and fair housing impacts, which have been met with deflection, obfuscation, and deafening silence, and still remain unanswered. In addition, no information has been provided to the board concerning enforcement or the due process rights of county residents that would be impacted by this new policy. So where does that leave us? Is this good or bad public policy? I don't know. Will it meet its goals? I don't know. What even are the goals? Are these simply HOA standards or class-based redlining? I don't know. At what cost? How many people will be impacted? Has this been a transparent development process? For the very first time in Baltimore County history, let me reiterate, for the very first time in Baltimore County history, through an administrative process, a community association is proposing a policy that impacts Baltimore County residents in what I originally thought were over 3,000 current owner-occupied units, but according to the map that we were appointed to today, that's actually 11,000 current owner-occupied housing units that this would apply to. And it deprives these owner-occupied residents of a basic freedom that they currently possess. Specifically, current homeowners and landowners would be deprived of their right to lawfully do with their property what they want. Whenever anyone proposes a policy that threatens to deprive an individual, in this case, an entire class of individuals, of any of their rights, we need to take that very seriously. We need to be fully informed, we must be extremely cautious, and we have to be extremely diligent. What I do know is that we do not have enough information to assess intended and unintended consequences in order to make an informed, data-based decision, although we have asked very clearly for that additional information. Therefore, in advance, I want to thank you for your consideration and ask for your support for the motion that I will make in a few minutes.
Yeah, I think, you know, everyone had very interesting and good comments. When it comes to affordable homes, I don't necessarily think it's, at this point in Baltimore County, that it's a minority-majority problem. I mean, most people just can't afford a new construction home regardless of what they look like unless they have some sort of generational wealth and tons of equity somewhere, so I would just like to say that. But I think we really, if the design standards are focused on the quality versus the aesthetics, I think that would be more applicable, mainly for new construction only, because if you're coming to the community building astronomical-priced house regardless, I think they should be built to a proper standard, if we could get a little bit more quality on what that looks like, and maybe leave the existing homeowners out, right? Because if you live in a, I mean, who's really doing a 50% renovation unless they are some sort of developer or trying to repurpose it for someone else, fix and flip? Because there's gonna be no uniformity in the neighborhood, existing neighborhood, if people are going out and doing these large renovations anyways, I don't really see how that applies. So is there options to maybe take that out of the guidelines? That would be my question.
Mr. Array.
I think, where's Ms. Diop?
I'm with you.
I remember last year, we, I think you were, part of a discussion, you presented some community groups, community, you know, association groups, and we also approved some guidelines that have been incorporated into the, you know, planning talent, right?
Yes, that was the...
So, did you think of maybe providing copies of those approved guidelines to this community group for their review? Because what I see here is that there are multiple groups. Steve presented Maryland Village Association, and I see Neil presenting the growing, you know, group. So, I see conflict, and what I see is that there may be no redress for a homeowner that wants to do what they intend to do with their property. I see restrictions, and I see that, and another concern is that the Essex Middle River group, they are not here to present a case, and the, you know, dedicated Leo to present that. And so maybe, for me, I don't know about anyone else, maybe we can, you know, request that they come here to talk, have a conversation with us, instead of just, you know, approving this, because you approved this, even though you're a guideline, good, everyone here, it needs to be enforced, so, you know, some... So, I'm going to make a motion later on, and just like, right there, to probably require that the community, their association, you know, show up here to talk with us.
I'm sorry, was there a question for me?
No, no, no. I mean, you know...
Okay.
But I think... He thought it's a very, he thought it's a difficult...
Okay. Mr. Warren, do you have a comment?
I have a comment. I just wanna clarify what, we're talking about, the word "poor" has been used. Somebody that makes $90,000 a year is not poor. That's not a poor person. A poor person in our community makes $36,000 a year. We're saying that a person that makes $90,000 a year can't afford a house. I think we can't lose focus of that. I think that needs to be part of every conversation that we have, and I think you're right, it's not a black-white thing. This isn't a poor-rich thing. This is just plain affordability. Affordability is not a bad home or a bad community. Affordability is, if I go to work every day, work 40 or 60 hours, I should have the ability in the United States to buy a house in the community that I live in. I drive to Pennsylvania, I drive to West Virginia, should be able to live and work in the community that I choose to, and that's, I think, important to be said.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
I'm concerned that, you know, you've built this Greenlee that is for median to above-average incomes, is that correct? And then, then we have, now we have guidelines to complement your investment. So, I just see a disconnect there, you know, that now this, your design is going to be imposed on all the other residents in this community. And frankly, why didn't you include affordable housing in your design? I can tell you that in Randallstown and District 3, 4, we have plenty of affordable housing, we have enough, and by not designing affordable housing into your community, you've increased the pressure on the other communities. So I don't, just don't see that it's, it addresses Baltimore County's commitment to equity.
I think we're gonna hear a motion, and then if everybody will just take a roll call. I wrote lots of lines on my paper, if we mean to make lots of motions, we're ready to do that.
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board remands the Greater Middle River Design Guidelines as presented to the EMRCC for a period of 12 months to enable the EMRCC to gather, analyze, and report scientifically-sound data and information necessary to address the board's questions and concerns regarding fair housing, equity, and cost impacts on new home construction, and inform consent of existing homeowners and landowners on the impacts of these guidelines on their homes and/or property, the answers to which will enable the board to make an informed, data-driven decision.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hafer.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinle's not here. Mr. Hinton. Mr. Halipka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Perlow.
Aye.
Ms. Panero's not here. Mr. Warren.
Although I would like it struck down, I will support this.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Oh, I got it, Howard. You guys say, please, I'm ready.
Well, this is the conclusion of our agenda. As a reminder, our next meeting will be held in person on Thursday, October 5th. We will have two public hearings that evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.